All right. This is the August 25th School Committee Business Meeting, calling to order 5:30 p.m. First order of business is Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Maria. So first order of business is to ratify the agenda for tonight. Does anyone have any changes or questions?
I make a motion that we ratify the agenda as published.
Okay, I think you're going to need to move that microphone a little closer to you, Dawn.
This is Dawn. I make a motion to ratify the agenda as posted.
Okay. Motion by Dawn?
Second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, the next order of business I have is public comment.
Chair, before we do that, I believe you're supposed to acknowledge that we have one member who is participating remotely.
Oh, okay. We acknowledge that we have one member of the school committee participating remotely, Kathy Lewis, so I just want to note that for the record and for the recording. So Kathy's on the Zoom. Thanks for the reminder, Dawn.
Thank you.
But we have a nice collection of people in the audience today, but I only see one person signed up for public comment. Is there someone else who wants to sign up? You have to sign the sheet, please. All right, and while folks are doing that, I just want to remind everybody that public comment is just that, public comment. It's not a discussion. We're not going to be able to respond to you due to open meeting law, but you're welcome to stick around for the agenda items that you're interested in. It's limited to three minutes per person. My trusty timer over here is going to cut you off at three minutes. That's Dawn, not Maria. And as soon as we get everybody's name on there, I think we can proceed. All right. Phyllis, you are up. And if you could just state your name and your address for the record, just like a town meeting.
Good evening. Phyllis Sprout, 91 Cliniquisette Avenue, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Good evening, Superintendent DeBoer, school committee members. Thank you for having this meeting and the opportunity for open comment. This is the first time I've worn a mask in months. I hope it's the last time because my doctor didn't prescribe this for me. It's a medical device, and as far as I'm concerned, nobody has the right to make me wear a medical device that has not been prescribed for a specific medical cause. So in that vein, I am coming together with probably some parents back there to protest what the Commissioner has just done and the Board of Education in instituting a universal mask mandate. You were, I know, because I've sat in those seats, I know that you are sworn into uphold the law. The law is above a mandate, and the law says that students will have equal access. Equal access means that there's no distinctive clothing, there's no coercion, there's nothing to make them feel different. I mean, you try putting any kind of distinctive wear on transgender and see how fast you have a lawyer at your desk saying, no, equal access is the law. It's Massachusetts law, it's federal law, and it's tied to vaccines. The vaccines, according to the latest statement, yes, some of them have been approved by the FDA, and those happen to be the Pfizer vaccines that are really not available. There are Pfizer vaccines that are available, and they are still under the emergency use authorization. So when our Commissioner says that students as of October 1st, now, I haven't seen the full statement because I believe he hasn't finished making it, he may have at this time, but you're looking for 80% vaccination of school and staff by October 1st, and after that, students will be differentiated by those who are vaccinated, are able to go mask-free, and those who are unvaccinated will have to wear a mask. That is discrimination. There are some people that feel that these biologic inoculations are so dangerous that they will not risk having their kids in a school situation where they may be coerced into taking these biologics. And to that end, my husband and I have decided that we will be happy to provide funds, a limited amount, to homeschool co-op that wishes to purchase curriculum materials. Because I just, I am beside myself. I know that there are parents that are feeling that they are being cornered, they're put into a box, and their kids are being endangered by their local public school.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phyllis. I can't read the first name here. Mr. Mahaffey, next. Robert, okay, thank you.
Thanks. I just wanted to take the opportunity to be on the record. My name is Robert Mahaffey.
Mahaffey?
Mahaffey, M-A-F-F like Frank, E-I. I've owned a local business in town for quite a few years. I picked Mashpee as my adopted town after doing a lot of business in here and really grew up and built a business with 150 employees here. And I recently sold it, and I choose to live here, and I own several pieces of property in Mashpee. And I waited my whole life to raise my family, and I have a three-year-old and a seven-year-old that have been doing dynamite in the school system. If I can give a shout-out to Mrs. Crimmens, she's a heck of a good teacher. That being said, I just want to be on the record as being, first, very concerned about the situation we're all in, and very respectful to the different views. I will say, though, with my eyes very focused on my seven-year-old, I absolutely saw a change in his behavior after the year. Do I think the kid's mind being in masks? I don't think the kid's mind being in masks. I think they do just about whatever a good teacher would ask them to do. That being said, I know my three-year-old's still learning how to speak. I know that he is queuing in on facial expressions, and not just from his teachers, but his friends and his peers. For as much research as I've tried to do on this, and I'll tell you, at the beginning of this whole pandemic, I was quite nervous and felt like it was my job to protect my family, and if you saw me going into the Stop &amp; Shop or whatever we call it over there, you would have laughed because I was masked up in every way I could be. That being said, for all the research I've done and all the things I've looked into, I have not been able to find solid evidence that corroborated that children were a specific risk or unvaccinated people would be at a risk from those children being unmasked. So I just wanted to be on the record here specifically for saying, I hope that you will open up a dialogue, and I hope you will consider the mandate not being a law, and you'll give us an opportunity to make the decision for ourselves as parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list, and I see we've got a few other people who've joined. If you want to make a public comment, I need to have your name on this list up here so you can just come up and sign up. Next, I have Victoria. I think Care, is that your last name? Okay.
Hi, my name is Victoria Care. First, I want to come and, you know, I appreciate the position that everyone is in. It's a really complicated position, and we never want to take risks. We always want to keep everyone's safety in consideration. With that, I do hate to see so many decisions made out of fear. Whenever anyone goes into a place of fear, decisions are often rash and impractical. And I believe that's what we're doing here. I fear that my sensory processing son, who is struggling learning to communicate and verbalizing himself, is held back by the fact that people can't hear him as good already when he doesn't have a mask, but put a mask on him, his confidence is even lower, and he's going to speak up even less in class if he has a question. And I think about my daughter, who is two, and she's learning to speak, and she doesn't, she's very expressive, she doesn't struggle with that, and she doesn't understand why everybody wants her to put her mask on because she's smiling at them trying to say hi. And what does that do to someone's psyche as they're developing at this time in their life? Then I want to hit it from another perspective, and we talk about racism and equity and equality. We're creating a divide where we're judging people because they come in and they don't have a mask on, they clearly have a belief that is in conflict to the belief I have. And for them to stand out and to do that, it creates a story and a perspective about that individual, and when that happens, their footing gets taken out from them. Opportunities are taken away. If I don't vaccinate my family, I can't put them in school. If my husband, who is a service member, is not vaccinated, he has to get tested for COVID twice a week to prove that he hasn't caught it, even though he's already had COVID. So the people that are making this choice out of a personal belief, we are being punished because access is taken away from us, and that means equity does not exist. And that's really all I have to say. I appreciate your position, and I appreciate you guys keeping our kids safe. My son thrived here, and he loves it here, and I just want us to make sure that we look at the whole picture and not building the wrong stories. Thank you.
Thanks, Victoria. Okay, next, I have Sarah.
Thank you sincerely for the opportunity to be here and to open up public discussion on this. I'm Sarah Fennell, and I have a fourth and second grader here in Mashpee. I understand that the state has issued the sweeping decision on masks, but I'm here to share my concerns so you can take them into consideration, hopefully when the decision is yours. It is certainly your job to protect the physical safety of our children, and we appreciate the job that you do in that regard. But if you're willing to look at both sides of the science, there are serious questions about whether masks are as effective as we want them to be. On the box of drugstore masks, which is what I assume the school would keep on hand, it clearly states that they are not intended to prevent transmission of viruses, and dirty little hands touching and adjusting them all day certainly does not help that. But even if you do believe that they are helpful, in addition to ensuring the physical safety, it is also your job as administrators and ours as parents to protect the mental, emotional, spiritual, and educational well-being of these children as well, and no one in their right mind can argue that these are not adversely affected by these mask mandates. I hear people insisting, the kids are fine, and I understand that kids are resilient as well as obedient and make the best of things by nature, but that does not mean that they're fine, and it is impossible to measure the true effects that multiple years of masks in school will have on them. At the pediatrician's office, the nurse told me that many children are afraid to momentarily pull their mask down, even with the doctor's assurance that it is okay. That is not fine. Anxiety in children is through the roof, and that is not fine. It is well-known that children rely on facial cues and expressions as a critical part of their early education. Ignoring that is not fine, and especially since the data shows that children are largely unaffected by this virus. The flu is statistically far more dangerous to children than COVID, but never in our wildest dreams would we have considered a blanket mandate for all kids all day. What does make sense is the increased focus on hand washing, cleaning high-touch areas, and keeping sick children at home. These common sense measures should stay in place permanently with or without the concern of COVID. We started last school year in a literal state of emergency with much less data, far more cases, and no vaccine for those who wanted it, but things have changed. I understand that there are questions about variants, but they are openly saying there could be new variants for years to come. So regarding this mask mandate, to what end are we willing to extend? Until there are no more cases, a month from then? That could be years from now. At some point, personal choice is going to have to come into play. There are people who insist on wearing masks forever, and those people eventually are going to need to feel like their mask is protecting them because we cannot put their fear on our children's shoulders forever. It's not right. You wouldn't know it from the Mashpee message, where most of the people weighing in are folks that do not have kids in the school system, but in my personal experience, I don't have a single friend who wants to see their kids in masks this year. And I really hope that you take the perspective of the parents and weigh that heavily. As for my family, until masks are no longer mandatory in Mashpee schools, I'm going to choose to be homeschooling my children.
That exhausts my list here. Hope, do we have anyone on Zoom who wants to comment?
No, there are no comments on Zoom.
So we've got a little bit more time allocated for this, so I'm just going to take a quick pause and ask that anyone else who wants to comment, this is your chance.
We are still good.
All right. Okay, I want to say thank you to everybody who shared their thoughts tonight. We appreciate it. Having been on that side of the table many times, I think it's important to share your views and also alert the administration of issues you think your kids may have with school policy, so I appreciate you coming in. So next item on the agenda is Mashpee face coverings policy, and that's linked in your Policy number EBCFA supplemental. I understand this was taken up by the policy committee, so I'll be looking to hear from one of you guys.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes, Brian.
The policy subcommittee did meet, and we recommend the following changes to the policy.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Can the subcommittee please summarize the changes?
They're summarized, so the current language is in yellow, and the proposed changes are in blue.
Basically, it was removing the use of the masks outdoors. That was one of the big changes to it, and making it suggestive. It does seem to align with both from what I've read, so that was kind of the main change to that.
So I think what I heard you say, because you kind of cut out there, Kathy, is that we are, last year, we had that the face covering must cover the nose and mouth in school buildings, on school grounds, even when social distancing is observed, and you guys have changed that to a face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings and on school transportation. Face coverings must also be worn outside when social distancing cannot be observed. I think the other reference in here is that the district is establishing these requirements which will remain in place until further notice. I don't see, the others are just references to guidance from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, CDC, DESI, and MASK, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the policy as presented.
Okay, I got a motion by Brian. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kathy. All right, any discussion? I understand that the Mashpee Board of Health met last night. Patty, do you have a report out from that?
Yes, last night, the Mashpee Board of Health voted in favor to support the policy, the face covering policy of the Mashpee Public Schools.
All right. Dr. Parkinson, I see you on the Zoom there. Do you have anything to add, our school physician?
Just that I think that, you know, previous comments notwithstanding that it's a good idea to be masking in school. It is, you know, we are all well aware of the increase in cases in the month of August, you know, largely due to the Delta variant. I'm sure aware that this is a more significant variant for children, although the, you know, absolute risk of hospitalization is low. It is about, appear to be about three times higher than it was for the variants that we were seeing last year. This is a different situation. It's a more transmissible virus. There've been, I believe, the AAP put out a statement last week saying that 180,000 cases in children over a one-week period last week. And, you know, we're all aware of the situation, you know, with the capacity issues with not just adult, but pediatric intensive care units in states where vaccine uptake is lower. You know, I think unfortunately, the country missed an opportunity to get past this largely if we had had a higher, you know, vaccine uptake rate across the board, and now we're having to deal with the consequences of that. So I think that the other important message from my point of view is to, if you or your 12 and up child is eligible to be vaccinated, that it's still really important. You know, Dr. Fauci was being interviewed this week, still emphasizing that that is the key to trying to make this not end up being a long-term issue, to continue to promote vaccination. And, you know, in the meantime, mask use, you know, we're all well aware of the reduction in childhood illness that happened last winter as a result of hand washing, distancing, and mask use. So, you know, we know that these strategies in the meantime are what we have. We have a population of 12 and unders who are not yet eligible. You know, many of them, you know, will be exposed to family members who have underlying conditions, and it's just, it's, nobody wants them to have to wear masks, but just believe that this is what we need at this particular point in time, and hopefully it can be reevaluated as the situation progresses and hopefully improves.
Great, thank you very much. Anything from the committee?
So I have a question to the superintendent. Now that we have basically, in essence, a year of experience using masks and following this policy, what have we done to help try to mitigate some of the issues that were raised in regard to social, emotional, and development of our kids who are required by this policy to wear masks? Would you please elaborate?
Sure. Absolutely, we all are sort of on the same page about being very student-centered and whole-child focused, and none of us want to see our students having to wear a mask a day longer than we think is necessary, but at this point in time, the guidance does encourage us to do that. I think the key to making sure our children are okay is, comes primarily from our teachers who are with our students every day. They're the ones who notice if a student seems off on a particular day. They build those relationships with them, and also the relationships that we try to build with families. And so we're going to try, you know, last year, we navigated together, and a lot of extra supports were provided where they were needed based on an individual's student needs and also those of the family. We have tremendous resources in this district in terms of our counseling department and the skill set of our teachers. So the key is really to be good noticers and pay attention to students that are presenting to have a social, emotional challenge that might be off from how we know them to be, and then we do put interventions in place as soon as possible and give them the extra supports, whether it's a regular meeting with a counselor or setting up something outside of the school, or working with the family to see what's going on at home, that they might need more supports as well. Our children do absorb the environment around them, and so they absorb the stresses that their families feel, and they're legitimate stresses, and they come to school, and we try to make this the best six and a half hours that they may have, working within the constraints and what we can control. So it really, for me, comes down to our teachers on the front line and our counselors really providing those proactive interventions and reactive as soon as they know there's a problem.
Thank you.
Matt, any questions from you?
No, it seemed like, you know, we're basically, we're following what we got from DESI too because they're going to reevaluate based on what we have for information from them. So I don't try to pretend to be a doctor. We try to listen to what those health professionals put in front of us and make the best decisions based on that. So, yeah, that's where I'm leaning.
Great. Kathy, anything from the road?
No, I just, like I said, I think we're trying to do the best we can to prevent schools from closing down and trying to protect as many as we can, and I understand there are definitely feelings about this, but again, like Matt said, trying to trust the health professionals that we get our guidance from, trying to trust the scientists who are doing the research on these front lines, and trying to just collect the best information we can to make these decisions. And, you know, it's not an easy job, but we're definitely trying to do our best. So I think with the information we've been given, both from DESI, from the state, from their Stacey, from Dr. Parkinson, you know, it's, I think, you know, we're definitely trying to do our best to protect all of Mashpee Public Schools, from the students to the teachers, to the paraprofessionals, who are all working with the kids day in and day out as well, and going home to their families. So, you know, keeping that in mind, yeah, but I feel confident with the change that this will help Mashpee get to a point where we can be unmasked sooner rather than later.
Thanks, Kathy.
Can I just make a small secondary comment? One of the issues that is very apparent when you're seeing children in an office, but it doesn't get much, it doesn't get much, you know, time in the public sphere, is that, first of all, as we know, if completely, you know, without adding on the consequences of the illness, if a child is positive, they're going to miss, they're going to be out for 10 days, going to be isolated at home for 10 days. If a parent of a child who's un-immunized is positive, that child's going to be out for the 10 days the parent is sick, plus a minimum of seven days after that, so 17 days. And then if you have different children or adults within a family and you get a cascade effect, you can get prolonged periods of time with quarantine. And that, to my eyes, has been the most gut-wrenching emotional part for families. By having more people immunized, by having more people masked, you reduce exposures, you reduce infections, and you will significantly cut into that. You know, without the masks, that becomes just a horrendous situation for families in every way, not to mention financially.
Thanks, I appreciate that, Dr. Parkinson. It's hard to believe that a year ago, we were getting ready for school. We had cohorts in place, we had hybrid learning, we had six-feet distancing, we had to delay athletics, we had to cancel clubs, we had to shut down theater productions, we had no chorus, and here we are, ready to start school with all those things, like, basically back, and all that remains is the masking. So I feel like- So I feel like we're on our way to get through this together. And I too am grateful that we have the guidance of not just yourself, but other health professionals to really guide us in these decisions. So if I don't have any more comments from the committee? Don, go ahead.
So from my perspective, you know, unfortunately, we're in a continuation of a situation that started last year and has continued to perpetuate. You know, the changes that were proposed here in the revised policy actually loosen a little bit of the restrictions.
Could you move your mic closer? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
Okay. The changes that are proposed in the revised policy actually loosen some of the restrictions in regards to outside. So, you know, it's a step in the right direction. It's not probably the answer that some people are looking for. But until we have better scientific information and better outcomes, it seems to me that, you know, we have to continue doing what we're doing. And, you know, our job is to protect our children, our faculty, and our administration in any way that we can to help ensure that they have the best opportunity to learn and thrive in the Mashpee Public Schools. So this seems to me to be consistent with that objective.
Well said, Don. With that, I'm going to call for the vote. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
My vote yes as well, it's unanimous. All right, moving on to our next item. And really, the final item of the night is planning for the 2121 school year. So I'm going to turn it over to Patty.
So we are all set to go for next year, I mean, next year, the next school year, but it's next week. We're looking forward to having all of our staff back on Monday and Tuesday. They are here for two full days from 8:00 to 3:00. Then our students will arrive. Our grades 1 through 12 arrive on Wednesday. And then our pre-K and K students start on Thursday. And then everyone has that Friday going into Labor Day weekend off, including the Monday, so it's a four-day break. And just in terms of, Nicole touched a little bit on it in terms of differences. So in the classroom setting, and I did send this home to families, but students will be sitting at desks that are three feet apart. They will all be facing the same direction. There is time for collaboration, so it's not as strict as it was last year. There will be frequent mask breaks. No one left a mask on all day last year. And even when we were able to bring all of our students back, starting in April, there are lots of ways, very creative ways, to do learning in other places that do allow for students not to be wearing their masks. We will be having seating plans in our classrooms that will allow for identifying close contacts if a student does test positive. Hand sanitizers and cleaning wipes are in all the classrooms, similar to what you see right there, that blue tub. And so students will be encouraged to wipe down their desk before they use it if it's in a class where multiple students use the same space. In an elementary school, if there was any sharing of materials, there will be an encouraging of wiping of those down as well. Our kids were really great last year at hitting the hand sanitizer dispensers all over the place and hand washing. We often talk about what we've learned from last year, and a lot of positives have come out of the experience that we had together. And so that cleanliness aspect is, in my opinion, never going to go away in our school setting. And so that in future years, we should continue to see, you know, not as much flu spread and all of that. And like I said, so for special subject teachers at the elementary level, those spaces are shared. And when you enter a classroom, they will wipe the desk. At the Mashpee Middle High School, tentatively, we are sticking with a block schedule. And so those students on either Day A or B will go to four different classrooms. And again, when they enter, they would wipe down their space before using that desk for that class. In terms of a schedule at the elementary schools, we are not going to cohort students for specials. So a specialist will see a group of students once a week throughout the school year instead of 34 days in a row and then shifting. And like I did mention, we do tentatively are planning for a four-by-four block at the high school. We're still working out a few items with the association related to that. There is no remote learning option this year. That was a decision by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. In terms of lunches, lunches will continue to be free or at no cost for all students this year. That is a federal program. We will continue to do the grab-and-go lunches that happened last year, which I don't know if any of, you know, your children ate them, but I was able to see them. And they might have started off a little on the slower side with basically your traditional sandwich. But well, early on in, Gus, with his creativity, was, it was pretty much like a hot lunch in a bag. So they were very good. Seating in the cafeterias, we don't have to use the gymnasiums in any of our schools. Everybody will be in the cafeteria. They will all be facing the same direction. They will not be masked. We will have seating plans, so we will monitor who's near who in terms of whether they're sitting at a bench seat. I believe at the high school, they will still be sitting in individual desks, all facing the same direction, but not six feet apart. It's more like three feet apart, three feet apart. And again, the seating plans are in place there in case we need to do any contact tracing. In terms of water, we do encourage all of our students to continue bringing a water bottle to school every day. We do have our water refill stations. The bubblers or fountains will not be turned on again. I'd like to see the bubblers actually be something that goes away forever, which might be since we now have the water bottle fillers. If a student, though, doesn't have a water bottle, we are, we do have some on hand to provide to a student. That would be, we're not encouraging you to send a beach towel with your kids. Individual teachers may request that, because a lot of teachers were, did different things when they took their kids outside. After-school activities, we are planning to have those at all three schools. And on my chart, I had indicated that the late bus was available. It is becoming slightly glitchy with the late bus in terms of our bus company and the availability of buses. So we're still problem-solving that right now with a goal of making sure we are able to offer that to our students. That's an important element to the school day. And in terms of bus transportation, they will be seated two to a seat. Sometimes with the littler ones, it might be three to a seat. Everyone is required to be masked. There is the hand sanitizer when they get on the bus that we require our students to use. We again, will have seating plans on the buses. We will not take attendance like we did last year on the buses. So if a student tests and shows up as being a positive, there may be a little bit more phone calling and checking to make sure your child was riding the bus, based on what the seating plan is that we have in place. We're initially starting the year not allowing visitors in the building. I know kindergarten starts a day later and there is a little bit of a family thing there. We haven't worked that out. That's also going to kind of go on a week to, well, the first month, we're going to say no to visitors, but we're going to reassess as we move forward. Athletics at the middle high school is currently going forward as the normal, as normal of the season, traditional season. The volleyball, which is the only inside fall sport, will be masked, but the outside sports do not have to be masked. There will be spacing and limited sort of timing in terms of using the locker rooms. But I don't know if anyone has any other questions from me. That's where we're at today. It does change regularly, but we're really hoping that we are good to go for next Wednesday.
I will be so happy to not see desks in our gymnasiums. I am so excited about that, that lunches are back in the lunchrooms. I mean, that was, ugh, that was tough to take. So, and I'm really excited that we're going to continue to offer free lunches, though I can't seem to get my kids to eat them because they're free. I hope that other people are taking advantage of that, because it seems like a really great opportunity for somebody not to make lunches. That's not me, apparently. So my only question was on, so we still are asking people to do the, I forget what we called the check last year, like?
Yes, so there is a daily self-check. We updated the form a little bit for families. It is an honor system, but we do expect sort of you to post that chart and kind of run through it. And the way this year has, sort of has a stop sign. So you check for symptoms and then it tells you what to do. And then there's another section. And really, you know, rely on our district nurse, our district health coordinator, Stacy Shackle. She is staying in that role for another year. So she is very available to families in the evenings and on the weekends in terms of giving guidance. And again, I think one of the speakers in public comment mentioned, you know, we do need children to stay home when they are unwell or when they have any of these symptoms, as well as staff. And we will continue to message that to our families. I know it can be a challenge for parents who have to get somewhere and go to work, but that really is a key piece to keeping our school environment as safe as possible. And one of the things, just to sort of related to the masking, and it's not something that we want our kids to do, but we feel at this point they need to do. But it's similar to, we don't know if our students have underlying health issues. Sometimes parents don't know, because they may not have uncovered it yet, similar to an unknown allergy. And we have a very supportive community when it comes to some of our food allergies, particularly peanuts. And often, there's a classroom that's a peanut-free classroom. And your child may love peanut butter, but you sort of decide, okay, for the wellness of the classroom, I won't send a peanut snack into the classroom or maybe at the lunchtime. So I feel like we don't always know what are some of the underlying conditions our kids experience. And so we just need to sort of do our best collaboratively to keep everyone as safe as we can and hoping that this is not a long-term impact for us in terms of masking.
Are we going to hear from the principals and the nurse too? Or is this, should anyone direct?
I sort of tried to provide the overall summary. I don't know if they have any other pieces they feel like they would want to add.
I was more just asking for the committee, if you wanted them to start asking questions or not.
Yeah, they are here if you'd like to ask them a question.
No, it was not planned for the principals to start to get that to church.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions from the committee?
No for me.
Got a head nod from Kathy.
Yeah, I think I have a question. So in regards to obviously, you know, the mask situation, you know, we just voted on. I think it's important for us to look at, you know, what we can control. I think that we can't control the students and their families with the honor system. But I do believe that we can have more control over our staff. So with that being said, if we're not requiring the staff to receive vaccinations, has there been any talk about the staff doing weekly or bi-weekly testing?
Well, we are going to do the, it's not called pool testing anymore. It's COVID surveillance, or Stacy could probably correct me. We are hopeful that that becomes a wider participation in terms of requiring it of students or staff. I mean, obviously, parents have to decide for their child to participate. And we would probably have to work something out with the association if it became a requirement. I will say that one of the differences this year is explained to me, and hopefully I understand this, because I did participate in that last year. So you swab yourself in both nostrils and that swab goes into the tube of 10 swabs. But what they're doing differently this year is, I would do that and then I would get the second swab, do the same thing. It goes into an individual test tube. So if that pool of 10 spikes as a positive, they don't have to call those people in and say, hey, you need another test. They're going to take those 10 tubes, individual tubes that are associated with that pool, and then they just run the PCR test again on those and would know almost immediately if the, who the person is that is positive. So I do think that is a good sort of measure to have in place. And we're really hoping that we can encourage more and more staff and students to participate. I don't know, Stacy, if you have any comments you'd like to share with that.
Good evening, everyone. You did a great job. More information will be coming. We do have an FAQ for staff and students scheduled. But again, we are, it's COVID surveillance safety checks. So we used to call it pool testing, and it is as Mr. Gore described. So, but again, we won't have to do the reflex testing or calling people back or that 24 to 48-hour window of waiting. So hopefully, that will help relieve the anxiety too, because I did understand that. And we're trying to make this as user-friendly and safe and effective as possible.
Yeah, so thank you, Stacy. As a reminder, tomorrow, we are doing a Zoom for our staff from 11:00 to 12:00, which is focused on health and wellness. We will be recording it for any staff member who can't come. And then next Monday night, the 30th, I believe, from 5:30 to 6:30, we are doing a parent guardian Zoom focused on health and wellness with Dr. Parkinson and Stacy. The principals will be on there. So I mean, it's really other questions as well, but mainly focused on questions related to health and wellness. And we do encourage anyone who wants to submit questions. That one will also be recorded. You can also, you can send your questions ahead of time as well. We'll make sure they get answered. And everyone will receive the recording of both. Well, staff will receive the recording of the staff one and everyone will receive the other.
Yeah, the only reason why I ask is because I think that it's important moving forward. If we're not going to mandate it, I think it's important so that that way, you know, we can control the adults and the staff. I think that we're trying to protect not only our students, but we're trying to protect our staff. And by protecting our staff, if we're not requiring them to have vaccinations, I'm a little concerned about how we're going to make sure that we have 80% in the high school with students, you know, wearing masks and not wearing masks. And when this mask, you know, mandate is reevaluated by the commission in October, I think that we need to start, you know, thinking about these decisions. And that if we have these in place, I think that we could, you know, possibly look at lifting the mask mandate. But until we take those other precautions, I don't think we can.
Stacy, do you have the data on the percentage of staff that's currently vaccinated?
Unfortunately, the system that we use is under maintenance, so I could not run what's been shared with us. But from looking at state data for students, it seems to be at 50%. And many staff have shared, but again, they're not required to. So I can't give you a specific number at this time.
We sort of lost you at the end there, Stacy. After 50%, 50% what?
So right now, the state data that was, is run weekly through the information system for organizations that people, if you, students are vaccinated, worry about 50% or 52% for Mashpee Public Schools. And again, staff, unless they've shared, I don't have that. We, again, it rolls in regularly, so many staff have. And we will be doing another vaccination clinic in the town that'll be open to everybody on September?
I think it's the 8th.
8th, thank you. So we are moving forward with that also.
We do know, majority, there is just a few staff members who have not chosen to vaccinate.
I think that's the concern here. I think that because they're not required to tell us if they've been vaccinated or not and finding out now that vaccinated people are still contracting the virus, I think that that just raises this issue even more.
Stacy, I just want to clarify something you said. So based on state data, 52% of the students in Mashpee over the age of 12 have gotten the vaccine?
Students that are eligible for vaccination in the state pool, it's at 52% at this time. And again, that's like two or three weeks old for data, for how they run it. So they very well could be more.
Stacy?
Yes.
It doesn't sound like it's working.
All right. That's why I don't like microphones. That sounds singing, and I really like that.
Do you need me to say that again?
Yeah, she can't hear you, hold on.
Is that better now? Okay, I'm going to use Patty.
Sorry, I only am interrupting to say that I have more current data. And they break it up into 12 to 16 years old, like up to 16, and then 16 to 19-year-olds. And it's all of those members of the Mashpee community who fall into those age ranges. So not necessarily all MPS kids. So the last, it was last week, 53% of our age 12 to 16 were vaccinated. And 70, it's posted on my desk, 74%, I think, of ages 16 to 19 were vaccinated as of last week. So, sorry, I just wanted to update that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, thank you. And where is that vaccination? And where is that vaccination opportunity on the 8th? Is that going to be at the school?
It is being sponsored by the Community Health Center in conjunction with the Mashpee Fire Department at Christ the King.
Okay.
We just found that that layout works really well for logistics, parking, finding it, the sitting and all those. So, and we've been sending that out. It'll be in our updates for the next few weeks also and pre-register online.
Great.
I have a question. So last year, due to COVID, we canceled a significant amount of extracurricular activities that occurred. What is the expectation for this year? Is there anything that will be limited?
So I think you're asking about co-curriculars.
Co-curriculars, clubs?
Yes, so we.
All of that stuff that didn't occur last year.
Yes. We have planned to fully implement all of our offerings that we've had in the past. Like I said, we're tentatively working on this, the block schedule at the high school, which those who participated last year know that there's a period eight every other day. And on the week when period eight has happened for three times, that is going to be an opportunity for some of our after-school clubs to meet during the period eight time, which some, which would be really great for some students who also do athletics, who have always been conflicted with participation in both, both things. We plan to do after-school activities at both of the elementary schools as well. And, you know, kids will be masked. We don't, like I said earlier, you know, late buses is currently the topic of problem solving for us. But we have full plans to move forward with that traditional, those traditional offerings.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Patty? All right. Well, I hope convocation goes well. I'm planning to be there in the morning. And I for one, very excited to get my teenagers back in school. I'm looking forward to having my home office back to myself again and appreciate all the groundwork that everyone in the administration, staff, teachers and everything have laid here to make this school year as normal as it can be under the circumstances. So thank you Patty. I'm going to move on unless you have anything else to add.
I do not.
Okay. We have one, next on the agenda, we have one additional slate for public comment. If, I don't have anyone here, I don't think, anything online, Hope?
There's nothing online.
Okay. Anything I didn't know about that we need to cover? Anything I didn't know about in advance? All right, well, that concludes our agenda for tonight. Meeting's adjourned.
Yeah, do you have to?
Oh, shoot, I forgot.
I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Oh, second that?
Hold on.
But you got more, you got more.
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to not reconvene and to open session at the end of that.
All right, thank you, Don.
Now you can second.
Matt.
Second?
Matt.
I still second it because I got it. I got it. I read the thing.
I couldn't tell where that sound came from back there. All right, second by, any discussion? All right, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So now the meeting's adjourned.